We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since 6:05 to discuss tenure recommendation and a BCUEA contract matter. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moriari.
Willow Bear.
Wendy Sampson.
Judy Keaton.
And Jonathan Fishmine.
First on the agenda is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 14th, 2020 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next are meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to congratulate a couple of our musicians who've been named participants in the 2020 New York State Music Association Performing Ensembles, which are the top high school musicians from across the state. Nicholas Watson, who plays the violin, is going to be performing in the Allstate String Orchestra Ensemble, and Peter Koisowitz, who plays tenor saxophone, will perform with the Allstate Instrumental Jazz Ensemble. Peter was also named an alternate in the Allstate Wind Ensemble, and these will, of course, be virtual. I'd like to also congratulate some of our Bethlehem National Merit Scholarship finalists. Caitlin Chung, Benjamin Goldberg, and Tyler Lepold have been named 2021 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, there among the highest-scoring entrants from New York State to the prestigious academic recognition and scholarship program that began in 1955. They now have the opportunity to compete next spring for approximately 7,500 scholarships that are valued at more than $31 million. So our best of luck to the three of them. I also wanted to let the Board know, we had talked early on when we were having sports discussions about starting at some point to allow practices in conditioning. So we have proposals, I worked with Mr. Keyes, our athletic director, to allow some conditioning for soccer, volleyball, and field hockey, as well as football. So the coaches would like to do one or two days a week beginning next week with a limit. There will be cap sizes of no more than 20 students per one coach. There'll be no actual competitions, just conditioning, ball skills, and they'll all be outdoors. So hopefully, the weather will stay good, so they can still do that. We also have a couple other students that were, some students, but we're starting with a couple, who will be staying after school to work with our help desk with all the Chromebooks and news. Obviously, there's some need for Chromebook repairs, so again, they'll follow some of the protocols, and we're looking at other opportunities as we move forward to have students be able to stay with limitations. And lastly, I'd like to take a moment to thank our Board members during Board Recognition Week. Volunteering to serve on the Board of Education is a great service to the community, and I'm not sure that most people realize the time commitment involved, and during a pandemic certainly adds a unique dimension to your roles. I very much appreciate the time you give and your continued support of our students, staff, and families, and it's my pleasure to work with all of you. And in honor of Board Recognition Week, our Board members do have donations to our school libraries, as we've done in the past. Usually, we have the books here, but now you have a list to try and meet COVID regulations. So I don't know if each of you want to share the books that you're donating?
Sure. Thank you, Jody. I think they're in order up on the screen there. So Christine, if you don't mind going first.
Oh, sure. So my books were donated to the high school, which is great, and they, some of the books are called Stamped Racism, Anti-Racism, and You, and it's a book about race and to understand it here and now. One of the other books is called Don't Ask Me Where I'm From, and it's talking about racial tensions at school and walls that divide. El Atso, which appears to be about indigenous diversity and just growing up in a different environment. Raise Your Voice, 12 Protests That Shaped America, which looks pretty amazing. I'd like to read this. It's about the different protests, women's rights, racial equality, climate change, gun control, LGBTQ, and rights, and some more. You Should See Me in a Crown, and it's talking about growing up black and poor, and how she goes to a high school where prom is a big deal and it's a struggle. How to Be Anti-Racist, and I think that goes with our mission of anti-racism and Black Lives Matter, and I'm happy that they were donated on my behalf.
Thank you, Christine. Willow, you're next.
That's me. So mine go to the middle school again this year. The list, I couldn't have picked a better group of books if I tried to do it myself, which I wouldn't, but I was very pleased with them. The first one is called Rainbow Revolutions: Power, Pride, and Protest in the Fight for Queer Rights. So this is a book about the police raid on the Stonewall Inn, which is a gay bar in Greenwich Village in 1969, which ultimately led to the annual Pride Week parade and festivities that we celebrate every June. The second one is called When Stars Are Scattered. It is described as a graphic novel about growing up in a refugee camp as told by Somali refugee, and I'll note that it's written by the same creator of Roller Girl, which is a really popular graphic novel for that age group as well. So that's probably very good. The third one is called This Book is Anti-Racist: 20 Lessons on How to Wake Up, Take Action, and Do the Work. Just like Christine noted, this is very timely, given the extreme social unrest we're all experiencing and the work that we've been doing as an administration toward creating a more anti-racist mission for the district overall. So I was very excited about that one. The fourth one is called Black Brother, Black Brother. It's described as a powerful coming-of-age story about two brothers, one who presents as white, the other as black, and the complex ways in which they are forced to navigate the world. Intriguing. Number five, Seeing Gender: An Illustrated Guide to Identity and Expression. The review describes it as a must-read for intelligent, curious, want-to-be-woke people who care about how we see and talk about gender and sexuality in the 21st century. And the last one is called Rick, and it is a novel about a young man who enters middle school and is introduced to new people and new ideas, and it seems to be focused on sort of a lesson about how to surround yourself with people who make you better at being you.
Chris.
Right. So my books were given to Eagle Elementary. The first is Five in the Bed. It is a kind of a contemporary version of Good Night Moon with a little bit of a math twist going on there. The next one is Gustavo, The Shy Ghost. It's a book about a ghost named Gustavo who are working on overcoming anxiety and stress. My next one is called Love is Powerful, which takes place at a women's rights march in New York City in 2017, and this book really focuses on having kids find their own voice. On this next book is Me and Mama. It is a great book about a mother and a daughter, and it's told from the daughter's perspective, and it just shows the connection between mother and daughter. And then I have Way Past Worry, perfect book for this year, I think, for anxiety levels. So it's a book about a boy and struggling to overcome anxiety, and he's got to work with his friends and his family to achieve that with all the stresses going on. And then the last book is called You Matter, and You Matter is a book about, it affects a timeline of existence through prehistoric times, through space, and a contemporary urban setting. And as they go through time, they look at different themes and try and deal with the differing emotions that they have.
Wendy.
So my books are going this year to Elsmere Elementary, and they feature a book by Malala. We Are Displaced: My Journey in Stories from Refugee Girls Around the World. So that should be an incredible read because Malala is an incredible person. We have Dancing Hands: How Teresa Carrero Played the Piano for President Lincoln, which sounds like a very intriguing story. Hair Love, about, you know, a daddy trying to keep his daughter's curly, coiling hair into a, into a style every day to get her ready for school, probably. Fry Bread, it's about Native American culture. Soul Way by Lupita Nyong'o, which is a very familiar name. So it's about a girl who's trying to make sense of her color and finding a shooting star, an encounter with a shooting star that helps her understand that there's beauty in every shade. Song for a Whale, about a grandmother and a granddaughter who are both deaf, trying to help a whale who can't communicate with other whales. The Proud is Blue, a story of hijab and family. And the last one is when Aiden became a brother, and Aiden is transgendered, so he's going to have a lot of emotions going through this. So the parents, he and his parents are preparing for the arrival of a new baby. So that would add a lot of, a lot of things. So that is my set, and I'm very happy that these are all going to Elsmere.
Jonathan.
Mine are going to Glenmont. Five on the Bed, which is a playful story about an interracial family getting ready for bed, and it's also a counting story, a counting book. Three Pennies is about a, an 11-year-old girl who is a foster child and seeking her mother in the catastrophes she gets into and hopefully out of. Pie in the Sky is about a young boy who recently immigrated to Australia, and he feels like he's been dropped onto a strange planet full of gibberish-sprouting aliens. Having been there, I can tell you that sometimes, speaking English, I still felt like I was dropped onto a strange planet, but it was a lot of fun, and I think the book will be too. Me and Mama, Chris Meyer also got, I think that'll be a great read. You Matter is... Well, let's just say it looks good. I didn't get a hint to go through this one. Just Like Mama is a book about a girl who has just a few things of her mother's, and she's raised by her grandmother. And Love Makes a Family is about, great, I lost it, here we go. Baking a Special Cake, Lending a Hand, Reading a Book, and all the other things that brings family together. And that's it. I'm glad they're going to Glenmont.
Those are mine. Mine are going to Hamegrale, which makes me extra excited because that's where all my kids have been. And they include All Welcome Here by James Preller, which is about everybody being welcome on a busy opening day of school. Hair Love by Matthew Cherry. And again, I was excited about this one because it's originally based on a short animated film, which I saw a while back and thought was terrific, the way the girl and her dad interact while she tries to create the best hairstyle before her mom comes home. Thank you, Amu. Manana Land. Planet Omar: Accidental Trouble Magnet, which was originally released in the UK, and it's about a boy who is at a new school, and he's worried that he's not going to make friends at his new school, and his worries are compounded by the fact that he's Muslim and is facing some prejudice because of that. And the book talks about his, a little bit about his daily life and his close-knit Muslim family. Ways to Make Sunshine by Renee Watson, which is described as a loose reimagining of Ramona Quimby and her exploits, but it's about the, captures the uncertainty of growing up amid change through the eyes of an irrepressible black girl. And I figure if it's, I love Ramona Quimby, so if it's all similar, that's going to be a very popular selection. And then the last one, When You Trap a Tiger, that weaves in some Korean folk tradition with a story about a grandmother and a granddaughter. So I'm excited to add these to the library, and I think, last but not least, should be Merit.
Yes. My books will be headed to Slingerland. My first book is also When Aiden Became a Brother, that Wendy discussed. It looks like a wonderful book that can help children understand what this child is going through. He is a transgendered boy, and he's welcoming a new baby, which brings some issues to light. My second book is Julian is a Mermaid, about a boy who loves mermaids, and reviews have indicated that it talks a lot about individuality and confidence and how children should not be afraid to express themselves. I have Facts Versus Opinions Versus Robots, which looks like a really timely discussion about the differences between facts and opinions in a fun way that would engage children. Not Enough by Maria Scriven, about a middle school student who's just trying to understand where she fits in. A Good Kind of Trouble by Lisa Moore Ramey, about a middle school student who's confronting her role in racial protests and how she feels about everything that's going on around her. And The Best Edit, about a 12-year-old Indian-American boy in a small town in Indiana who's also struggling with identity issues. They all books look great. I'm going to put a bunch of these on my whole list at the library.
So that concludes my superintendent's report, and I just want to thank the Board again for all your service to the district.
Well, thank you, and for the books. I love that we do this every year, and we get a chance to not just give some books to the libraries around the district, but also that we get to a little sneak peek at some of the new books that have come out that we might have otherwise missed.
Holly, before you move on, I wanted to touch base about the high school sports that you mentioned as well in your update. I had two questions. One was whether we communicated with the local Department of Health about the plan for conditioning and whether or not they had an opinion?
Well, with our school physician, we did. We went through what we would do, but there will be like no scrimmages, like, so they're going to be pretty much conditioning, they'll be wearing masks, there'll be social distancing, some ball skills for soccer and volleyball, but no sharing, so.
So all consistent with the guidance that came out?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yep.
And then the other question was, I know when we had thought out loud about the possibility of conditioning without games, one of the reasons why I understood that we couldn't do it was that it would somehow interfere with the ability to have a full season later. Have we reconciled that?
Right, so this isn't actually part of the season. This would be considered more informal if it's a couple days a week. It's similar to what coaches have done in the summer leading up to it, or sometimes in the spring where they've used the weight room. So it doesn't constitute, it wouldn't violate any of the season piece, so it's fine to do this, yep.
And are those coaches, sorry, I guess I had a third question. Are those, will we be approving stipends then for the fall for those coaches?
We won't until we know about fall, too, exactly when the season is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jody? Next up is our Board report, and the main thing that I wanted to bring up was that we have the NISBA convention is next week, being held virtually. I know I'm signed up to attend. I don't know if anybody else is attending, but I'm seeing some nods, so it looks like, I think I see Willow and Wendy. I don't know if you guys are attending, but, so we'll certainly report back after that. We do need to select a delegate for the, for the NISBA business meeting, which is on Saturday morning, to vote on the resolutions. You don't have to be attending the convention to go to the meeting and be the delegate. I know I did it the last couple of years, so I wanted to make sure that the floor was open to anybody else who might be interested in doing it.
Holly, it sounds like you're very good at it. We don't want to lose your expertise.
I already nominated Holly for the position.
I second that nomination.
Good.
I've done it a couple times, so.
All right.
I'll do it if you want to.
I'll do it one more time. So Brittany, if you can figure out what we need to do to get our credentials or whatever for this year to make that happen, that would be great. Thank you. And I know there was the law seminar, the first day of it today, and I know Willow was also on there, and Willow, if you wanted to say a couple of words about some of the things that we were listening to.
Sure. I wish I had made notes. Basically, we walked back through sort of a trip down memory lane of the various executive orders that the governor issued, and the guidance documents from the Department of Health and State Ed, and an acknowledgement that trying to read them all together isn't always as straightforward as one would hope that it was. We talked at length about some of the legal considerations around delivering special ed services remotely, and I think a lot of other school districts are struggling with that a lot more than we are, was sort of what I gathered. We talked about teacher evaluations and how to conduct those remotely and sort of the legal considerations there, since those are required by statute, and about reasonable accommodations, which, you know, every lawyer everywhere is talking about for the last several months. So those are sort of the highlights from today. Basically, I was struck with, you know, we know how hard the Board has been engaged in working, and certainly how hard the administration has been working all summer, and I didn't really think about how hard attorneys for schools have been working since the closure, and then the reopening, and then the staying open, and all the millions of legal considerations there are there. So it was sort of a robust review.
And day two is tomorrow. And that's all I had. If anyone else has anything else they wanted to share tonight?
I'd like to jump in on the law conference, which I also attended. In addition to everything that Willow mentioned, they also discussed the kinds of backgrounds that teachers should or should not have, and some of the faux pas of having a student or a teacher working in a, you know, from their home with the camera on. Also, they discussed the legality of recording and whether or not a school has an intellectual property right in the recordings, which, as I understand, they do. So just two other things to add. In addition, last week, and this is definitely in the form of an apology to the, to the Hall of Fame Committee, I misspoke. I said something I should not have said, which was that if the committee didn't act, that the Board should act independently. At the time I said it, I realized, or rather, after I said it, I realized that I wasn't sure that the Board had that authority. I also realized it put the committee in a very bad position. I did not mean it to come across as a threat, and I hope no one with this apology will take it that way. I want the committee to do whatever it feels is appropriate, and I apologize for putting them or for making their decision harder if I did, and I apologize to the Board for speaking without thinking.
Thank you, Jonathan. Does anybody have anything else?
I wonder if it's worthwhile to try to summarize Jonathan's point, because I don't know how that audio is going to come out. Jonathan, it was very hard to hear you, but I don't want to misrepresent what he said either, so I just feel like it was a...
Willow, take a stab at it, and if I have a problem, I'll let you know.
Just so you guys know, Jonathan's audio is coming across very clear, not for everyone else to hear, it's just something about this room, so I...
Okay, well, I heard him.
Okay. All right. So we're told that people online and the video being recorded can hear you fine, it was just us, so I will leave it at that.
All right, we'll leave it at that. Anybody else have anything they needed to share? Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment. We did receive a few comments, so I will read those now. The first one comes from Michael Gibbons. Dear School Board Members, as we move forward, it is clear that COVID has not been spread through athletics in any school in Section 2 thus far. This is true nationally as well. Spread has occurred in primarily uncontrolled environments like stores, parties, malls, public protests, gatherings, et cetera. Academics is a relatively small part of what students value in high school. Most students will be just students in college, and this time is the only opportunity they will have to play a sport, act, or play music, et cetera. I would ask that you legitimately put yourself in their shoes, picture yourself a teenager who thrives with competition, performing, achievement, et cetera, and look at the benefits of these activities versus the damage caused by isolation and boredom. I'm sure you have and will receive numerous emails as the school year progresses. Please take them seriously. As I speak with more B.C. parents, the common theme is, we pay our school taxes to show support for and ensure the school thrives. What are we getting in return? Parents are more than willing to drive to games, supply sanitizer, et cetera, to help make it safer to participate. Thanks for your continued service to the school community. And then, the second comment came in from Chris Edwards. I write today with the understanding that there will be a discussion to retract Megyn Kelly's elevation to the B.C. Hall of Fame. I think it is important to remember that the hall is not just for current students or Board members. Nominations are open to all graduates, and it represents the legacy of thousands of past students who have passed through the halls of B.C. over the last 100-plus years. I am disappointed that the Board is not dismissing this notion out of hand and doesn't have more productive things to work on. At a time when our nearby inner cities are struggling to even marginally educate their students, wouldn't it be wiser to be fostering consensus around figuring out how to pair off some of our own embarrassment of riches to these communities? Instead, you are enabling this misguided initiative by giving it a public hearing. More importantly, which use of limited Board reset, of, which use of limited Board resources do you think would be more productive for minority students in the capital region? Freedom of the press is one of the very first guarantees in our Constitution, and U.S. School Board members should certainly know that. Chilling the ability of the press to ask questions divergent from the current trend is extremely dangerous, and the founders included the First Amendment for this very reason. On the matter purportedly at hand, Black Lives Matters founders have in interviews plainly spoken of their training as Marxists. In addition, they have spoken of their goal of de-emphasizing the nuclear family and other untraditional policy prescriptions. I need not argue as to the efficacy of any of these plans for you to see them as being politically contentious. As such, it is a journalist's job to draw out details and feelings from supporters and critics by asking hard questions. The fact that you are taking the time of the School Board to flesh this rather elementary notion out is a bit deflating as a taxpayer and even more so as an alum. If any good is to come of this, you should reject this proposal swiftly and mandate class... class time on giving a primer on the Constitution and the reasons why such a request flies in the face of many of the foundational principles of this country. Megyn Kelly is a graduate of B.C. who has risen to great heights in an incredibly competitive industry. To effectively ostracize her for doing her job would be a much darker stain on the board than it will be on her. We also received a comment from Marietta Angelotti, who writes, please count me in as another parent who feels that not only is honoring Megyn Kelly offensive, but the entire idea of the Hall of Fame is not the message we want to send our students. Bethlehem pride is about living up to the values the district espouses, not about chasing fame and fortune. I recommend the board vote to remove this old elitist relic for good. And then the last comment comes from Colleen McGary, who writes, I am writing with utmost respect and appreciation for the B.C. teachers and school community for all of the many hours of thoughtful work that has been dedicated to making this year happen for our students. I'm a concerned community member, educator, and parent, writing to urge B.C. to reconsider its position to push through the 2020-2021 school year as if it were a typical year without flexibility in curriculum and grading for teachers and students. This is not a typical year. I disagree with the expectations that imply that the school year should be treated as such. We are approaching the end of the first quarter, and it is an appropriate time for the district to reflect and reevaluate this position. Your teachers are tired, your students are tired, your parents are tired, your community is tired. People are stretched beyond their limits, and that includes our children. The expectation that children be on computers for the length of an entire regular school day plus additional hours for homework beyond that day is developmentally inappropriate, unreasonable, and potentially damaging. Prior to the pandemic, the district encouraged families to attend forums led by author and school counselor Thomas Kurtzing, in which the topic of parenting in the digital age was slated to be the focus. His book reminds us of the importance to manage screen time, to monitor technology use and its impact on mental health, and the importance of strategies in the real world to help manage anxiety. It seems that the current practices and expectations conflict with principles we were exploring just a few months ago. Now students are struggling to determine the difference between classwork and homework as it all feels the same. Differentiating between the two is impossible since nearly all the experiences are taking on digital platforms. The fatigue is real, and it is crippling, and it feels to students as if there is more work than a typical year as a result. The district homework and late work policies need to be reevaluated for the mental health of our children. The camera policy for virtual class meetings is another area of concern. While I completely understand the complexity of, of teaching in this hybrid model, I question the legality of requiring students to always have cameras on and then penalizing those that don't. A, a child in B.C. is marked absent from class if their camera is off despite their participation in other ways during their virtual class. Neighboring suburban council districts have drastically different policies around this topic. At best, this policy is inequitable, and at worst, it violates the rights of our children. The district has been a leader in paying attention to our most vulnerable learners with daily in-person attendance for some, and has set the bar high for those families who choose the fully remote option. But what about the average students who never ask for this hybrid learning model? The students who need the extra support of in-person attention and after-school sessions? The students who need the connection with peers and teachers in person to see value in their experiences? What are we doing to support them? I recognize that teachers are working tirelessly, but this is not an equitable situation for all learners, and we need to acknowledge that this model is not working for many students. How is the district being flexible with struggling students regarding their workday, homework, and grading? When students miss assignments or turn in work late, the penalty destroys the chance of performing well on the task. Students are not allowed to retake tests or quizzes or complete test corrections when it is clear that students have gaps in their knowledge and skill as a result of our spring remote experience and the fall hybrid model. These policies kill morale and motivation. How as educators and learners can we respond to this situation with anything but flexibility? There is no logic in pushing through curriculum at a regular year's pace with regular grading policies. I understand B.C.'s desire to work toward the same level of excellence as we consistently do year after year, but this is the year we need to redefine our quest for excellence. It is only fair to students that we redefine our vision for what success and excellence look like in this moment in history. Our motivation in bringing students back to school can't be solely about homework, cameras, curriculum, state standards, and test scores. It just cannot be our focus. Of course, there are state guidelines and Regents exams that the district must consider. However, this community knows that quality schools are so much more than that. As an educator and parent, I am exhausted in ways I never imagined possible. I am up nights worried about my students, my practice, and my craft. I am fighting a losing battle with the demand my children face after the long hours of the school day. I am torn between attention to my struggling students and my own children, and between pushing my children to rise to unreasonable challenges and allowing them opportunities that create a sense of normalcy in their lives. The toll on our collective mental and physical health is a sacrifice we should not be willing to make. Our children are fortunate to have a community of educators and parents that support them year in and year out. We can't fail our children now. Again, I urge B.C. to reexamine some of the district's policies and approaches during this untested hybrid learning experience. The community has been a model of excellence before and during the pandemic, and we can be a model of excellence now by demonstrating a willingness to reflect and respond as we move through this experience together. And all the comments, we'll attach them as usual to the, to the meeting minutes so that they're available for anybody to take a look at.
Okay. Can I ask Dave, Dave, can I ask you a question regarding that letter? Are we looking at curriculum last year to see possibly the gaps that some students may have had because we didn't have the Regents exams or other assessments? That we may be looking to allow some sort of like remediation for those gaps?
We, we are, and we spent, all of our summer curriculum work was on adjusting this year's curriculum to ensure that we were only addressing sort of critical standards, knowing that we weren't going to have the time to invest that we normally would. Just to be fair, I mean, we, we continuously revisit our plan. We know that it's not a perfect plan. No plan, when you have to throw it together over the summer and expect teachers to completely flip the way that their instructional model looks, is going to be perfect. So we are constantly revisiting. You know, the, the letter obviously raises some great points, and the one thing I will say is that, I, I just want to be careful, you know, it, it sort of paints a picture that all teachers are doing the same thing, that these are, you know, these are the experiences that every student's having with every teacher. There are going to be pockets of inconsistencies, there are going to be pockets of teachers doing different things, and it's going to take time for teachers to work together to figure out what's working and what's not. We, we've never done this before. Teachers weren't trained to teach in a remote environment, and certainly they weren't trained to teach in an environment where, you know, you know, half the kids are with you, half the kids aren't, which is entirely different than when all of your kids are home. We have some, you know, you're teaching classes where in some instances, you have students that are home every single day, some are here every other day, some are here actually every day. You know, typically in a model like, in a remote model, you have at least consistency in terms of the types of students you're dealing with. Like, all of your students are home all of the time, that's easy to plan for. All of your students are here every other day, that's easy to plan for. All of your students are here every day, it's easy to plan for. When you have a mix, how can you possibly meet the needs of every single one of those students? It's, it's nearly an impossible task, or teachers are constantly adjusting and trying to figure out what works best, sort of for the collective whole, knowing that you're never going to reach every single student where they need to be, because you're, you're basically trying to serve three different models simultaneously. So we're constantly looking at our, at what teachers are doing. Teachers are, I mean, flexibility's been a word we've been using since last March, but it's, it's easier said than done. Teachers have been, you know, instructing and grading for the same way, some for 25, 30 years, and to sort of, all of a sudden, expect them, you know, with what, two to three months worth of planning to have this, you know, revelation in terms of what this type of teaching model would look like, it's just not realistic. So yes, there's going to be some growing pains, but we're, we're constantly talking about those pains and making adjustments. So, you know, as the letter stated, teachers are as stressed and as stretched thin as everyone else. So it's, this is not, by, by any means is it an ideal situation for anyone. All I can say is that we're constantly working to provide the best experience that we can for kids, knowing that the mental health piece of it is just as important as the academic piece, if not more.
Yeah, and I wanted to add in that, the mental health piece has been a huge component, it's a huge component of our reopening plan. And I know Kristin Connors in the subcommittee who worked on that, I was part of that, have been pushing into classrooms, providing support. They've picked up more counseling than they've had in the past. They're meeting virtually with kids who are at home. So I don't want people to think that we're overlooking that piece. We recognize that's a huge concern and will continue to be a huge concern. So that has been a big piece of our reopening and will certainly continue to be so.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item five, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following, Finance Action Item 1.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following, Professional Personnel Action Items 1 through 5.
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following, Support Staff Action Items 1 through 7.
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, Other Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following, Action Item 1.
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item 6, Future Meetings and Events. On Monday, October 26th at 6:00 p.m., we have our Policy Committee meeting. And do we know which room we're going to, are we going to be in here?
Yeah, and we have a facilities meeting before that, that was added on.
Oh, okay, so there's a facilities.
Zoom, yeah.
So Facilities Committee on the 26th at 5:00 o'clock by Zoom, and then the Policy Committee meeting will be at 6:00 o'clock here in D-122. And then our next board meeting is on Wednesday, November 4th, starting at 7:00, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00. And the plan is for that to be streamed for the public, presumably from here, from D-122.
I'm sorry, do we have the ability to zoom in another board member? Does that, is that more complicated? Or is it more set up for the hybrid, and does it make a difference?
For this meeting, you mean?
For the fourth.
For the fourth.
I'll be pole watching in Pennsylvania all day the day before, so I feel like I need to.
I would think you could zoom in.
Yeah. Quarantine myself.
Yeah, you should be able to. Yeah, and definitely, yeah, if you're in a bad state.
Well, I can do it, you can do it.
There you go.
Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.